Hello and welcome to this meeting of the Council of the Town of Oakville gathered in a workshop session to consider how we're going to finance our rainwater infrastructure needs. Madam Clerk, do we have any regrets?
We do, from Counselor Longo.
Alrighty, well, let's see, where did I there? Alright, are there any declarations of community area interest, Counsel? Madam Clerk, there are none. And next is the discussion item, the Rainwater Management Financial Plan. And we have, we have presentations. Now, I think most of us have previewed those because they were supplied in advance. Madam CIO, would you like to introduce the, the events of the evening?
Certainly, Mayor Burton. You're correct, this is a workshop on the rainwater, the second in a series that we had presented earlier. And I think Catherine Hewitt, well, I know Catherine Hewittson from our asset manager, Director of Asset Management will start the presentation. And then we have representatives from ACOM, who are a consulting company that's been assisting us with, will also then follow up with the presentation. And I think there's a conclusion at the end from Catherine Hewittson as well.
Alrighty, Ms. Hewittson, we're looking forward to your information.
Thank you very much. And so, I'd like to welcome you to the Council Workshop Number Two for the Townwide Rainwater Management Financial Plan and Stormwater Feasibility Study. So as you know, over, thank you, over the past several months, the town has been exploring options for a sustainable funding source to ensure stormwater infrastructure is maintained in a state of good repair and improvements are made to adapt to climate change. The objectives of the funding source are one that is affordable, equitable, simple to understand, and provides financial sustainability. I'll be starting off the workshop with an overview of the agenda and an update of the rainwater management plan work. Then we've invited our partners, as you know, ACOM, to provide an update on the progress made on the stormwater feasibility study and as well outline the public engagement plan for Round Two. So the purpose of this workshop is to provide an overview of the stormwater fee options considered and the preliminary results. We're also like to provide an overview of the potential impacts to the property owners for the different fee options. And lastly, outline the education engagement opportunities for Round Two and then wrap up with an overview of the next steps. Oops, sorry. So as I mentioned, I'm going to start off with a recap of the process to date and revised 30-year numbers for the stormwater management needs and an update to the annual shortfall and a little bit of an overview of the feasibility study process. Then we'll hand it over to ACOM, they'll do a little bit of a recap from Workshop Number One, and then they'll get into the details of the stormwater fee methods that were evaluated. And they'll provide some details of the calculations and some results on how those different fee methods compare. Sorry, it's really jumping. Then ACOM will also get into a bit more description of the different incentive programs, outlining, you know, what is a credit program, what is a rebate program, some of the advantages and disadvantages. And then lastly, an overview of the engagement plan for Round Two, what and when and how those different opportunities will be. And lastly, I'll be coming back to kind of wrap up the conclusions and some of the next steps. And then we'll take some questions from Counsel. So staff first introduced the rainwater management plan to Counsel in March of 2023 when we presented the Townwide Rainwater Management Plan. The intent of the rainwater management plan has been to review all stormwater infrastructure and natural asset needs with applying the risk, cost benefit, and service impact lens and to develop a prioritized long-term stormwater needs roadmap and supporting financial plan. Ensuring environmental sustainability to meet future needs related to green spaces, natural areas, and act on climate change mitigation and adaptation is one of Counsel's strategic priorities. The rainwater management plan ties directly to the climate change adaptation as it builds on those various studies and assessments that have been completed recently to look at ways to identify and manage climate change risks and build resiliency in our stormwater The rainwater management plan is a multi-phase plan that builds on previously completed work to provide an integrated approach to planning and implementing stormwater-related infrastructure into the future. The objective being to review the variety of competing needs, assess the risks and benefits, and create a prioritized implementation plan that will be phased over the next 30 years or so. The project involves three phases, as noted here. Work on Phase One and Phase Two was completed in 2022 and 2023, and the results provided to Counsel in July of 2023 in the Townwide Rainwater Management Plan Update Report. We are now in Phase Three of the project, which began earlier this year, which involves a development and assessment of various funding options to support the delivery of the long-term capital plan, including public engagement and the development of an implementation plan. The town has retired ACOM, retained ACOM to assist with this phase of the work. So before we get into the work that ACOM has provided, we wanted to give you a bit of an update on the revised costs for the long-term forecast and what assumptions we've built those revised numbers on. So over the past few months, staff have been reviewing those needs and have updated them to reflect more recent cost estimates and new study information. So we've brought in line the cost estimates for all our infrastructure renewal and other estimates to reflect $20.24, whereas you know in the past, they were based on 2022 numbers. We've also got recent results from Seville, Joshua Creek, and Lower Morrison, the rain studies and the flood assessment. And we've incorporated those recommendations into the long-term plan. We've also added an ongoing ditch and regrading program to ensure proper drainage, and this was a new item that was added into our 2024 forecast last year. And the last thing that's been added into the total is an estimated cost for the project implementation as well as the billing administration. So as you can see, the total revised 30-year needs is $732 million. Based on our work on Phase One, there are two distinct streams of work that have been identified under the umbrella of the rainwater management plan. Each stream addresses different needs, service objectives, and has different risks associated. Stream One addresses the life cycle needs. This represents the ongoing maintenance and inspections, condition assessments, as well as the life cycle renewal and rehabilitation works required over the long term. Some of our infrastructure is now beginning to approach its end of life and will require more investment into the future. The revised total for Stream One is $351 million, or 11.7 million per year. This funding would be focused on maintaining our existing infrastructure in a state of good repair, which is essential in protecting our stormwater network and ensuring it functions Stream Two is focused on our climate adaptation works and includes recommendations from the various flood risk assessment studies that have been completed to understand the impacts of a more intense storm event or higher lake levels and identify opportunities for adaptation. The revised total for Stream Two is $365 million, or 12.2 million per year on average. This would provide funds to enhance our town's existing stormwater network and provide more resiliency against climate change. Lastly, we've now also considered what the cost to implement the capital program and administer the billing and collection of the new revenue stream. So those costs include a small team of five staff to oversee the design, construction, inspection, and execution of the 30-year program. In addition, we've included two staff to assist with the ongoing planning, analysis, billing calculations, and revenue collection, as well as other miscellaneous expenses for supplies. So the total average cost per year is about $550,000 per year. So overall, the revised 30-year stormwater needs total $732 million, or 24.4 million average per year. This is about a $3.1 million increase over the amount we showed you in the last presentation. So as part of Phase Two of the plan, a high-level assessment of the affordability of the recommended program was completed to determine the impact on the funding sources. Based on the 2024 budget, the town currently allocates a total annual average of 12.6 million in existing funding for stormwater infrastructure. This now leaves an unfunded amount of about 11.8 million when compared to our new $24.4 million need. So I've shown you this graph in the past, and it serves as a reminder of why we're completing the stormwater feasibility study and exploring the various funding options. This graph was based on the existing 2024 capital forecast and hasn't been updated yet to reflect those new revised costs. We're currently in the process of preparing the 2025 budget, as you know, and I believe the Director of Finance, John Vanderheiden, will be providing an update for this chart as part of his budget presentation. So I just wanted to take a moment to highlight some of the public engagement and promotion materials that we've done over the last couple months as part of our Round One. So we've implemented a new email contact called stormwaterfee@oakville.ca for the public to reach out to staff directly and ask their questions and look for more clarification on what the study is about and what it means. We've added a new stormwater fee project page to our website, which gives more information about the study itself and why we're doing it and the different opportunities where the public can get involved. We've also been promoting on the website and educational materials on social media with various posts over the past several months. Lastly, we've completed a few videos.
Stormwater management is a core responsibility of the Town of Oakville. We plan, build, operate, and maintain approximately 30,000 catch basins, 70 stormwater management ponds, 240 kilometers of ditches, and 690 kilometers of stormwater pipes. That's further than the distance between Oakville and Quebec City. Our stormwater system also includes green infrastructure and natural assets, including the town's eight-kilometer Lake Ontario shoreline and its 16 crests. Keeping the whole system functioning well involves work like street sweeping, renewing or replacing old sewers, catch basins, and culverts at the end of their lifespan, cleaning swales and ponds, as well as monitoring and fixing erosion along the crests and lakeshore. On average, the town allocates approximately $8.9 million each year from property taxes to pay for stormwater services. This is around 4% of your annual property taxes. This money helps to ensure our infrastructure and natural assets are protected and continue to function properly. But we face some challenges. Some of our infrastructure is aging and reaching the end of life. Our pipes, shoreline, ponds, and other infrastructure are beginning to need renewal. And climate change means that Oakville will experience more extreme rainstorms and temperature changes, putting a strain on the town's stormwater system and increasing the risk for flooding and property damage. The town has a plan to adapt to climate change impacts and build resiliency in our stormwater system over the next 30 years. But to make sure we can implement those improvements, we need to invest more funding in our stormwater system. Stormwater management is an important service for our community. With enough money for ongoing maintenance, renewal, and climate change improvements, we can prevent issues before they happen. We need to plan now to keep our community safe into the future. And we need a fair and sustainable way to pay for it. That's why the town is exploring different funding options, including a stormwater fee. Currently, property owners pay for stormwater based on how much their property is worth, not how much their property contributes to the stormwater system. But a stormwater fee can be more proportional to the amount of stormwater runoff, so properties that have more hard surfaces and create more runoff pay more. It's a more fair and equitable way to pay for stormwater services, and many nearby municipalities already have transitioned to dedicated stormwater fees. You can learn more about why the town is exploring stormwater funding options by visiting oakville.ca and search "stormwater fee."
Thank you. So we have a set of three different videos available on the website, broken down into different components. I don't like using this mouse. So lastly, it's just an overview of the stormwater fee feasibility study scope. There are a number of tasks that we embarked on over the past several months, from the project initiation, reviewing our best practices and comparing, looking at what other municipalities are doing, looking at the different fee options and narrowing down to three different scenarios, doing those fee calculations. And we are here now at Task Five, doing our fee evaluation of the different methods that we've done the calculations for. So with that, I cannot touch the mouse anymore. Would I hand it over to our partners from ACOM? We have Pippi Warburton here, which you may recall was here with the last workshop. She's our Water Resource Lead for Canada from ACOM, and she's the project lead. We also have Alicia Evans, who's the Manager of Community Engagement and Communications, whose role is to plan the public consultation portion of our project. So with that, I hand it over.
Thanks, Catherine, and thank you for having me. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. So through you, Mayor, I'm going to recap, I'm going to start by recapping our previous workshop and just touch on some of the topics that Catherine's just mentioning. So, okay, so the, the Town of Oakville is reviewing its stormwater funding mechanism, like so many municipalities currently. Why is it doing that? Well, currently, you're funding your taxes through, you're funding your stormwater program through taxes, which is probably agreed to be inequitable. It's also not sustainable, and to meet the Ontario Regulation of Asset Management Planning, you need a sustainable funding mechanism for all your key assets. So that's another one of the reasons that, you know, Oakville's been looking at a new funding mechanism. So part of the guiding principles for evaluating a funding method were provided through consultation with our project team and in the RFP, and we talked about this, I think, at our last workshop. So for the funding method to be fair and equitable, for it to be affordable and financially sustainable, to be justifiable, and to promote climate change resiliency, and also simple to understand and simple to manage. So you're right, currently funding the, the stormwater infrastructure through the tax method. So the tax, approximately 4% of the municipal taxes collected currently are going towards your stormwater management program, approximately $9 million. With the way that the taxes are broken up in the city, that means that about 73% of the stormwater fund is financed by your residential community and about 27% through your non-residential community, your commercial industrial properties. When we compare that to the amount of runoff that's being contributed to the system on those types of properties, just residential and non-residential, we see that discrepancy. And that's why we say it's inequitable to be funding stormwater through a tax base which is based on property value. So using a land area, runoff area analysis, we see that the runoff is estimated to be coming approximately only 44% from the residential properties and 56% from the non-residential properties, remembering that non-residential properties are only paying 27% towards the stormwater fee. So we did look through the study, we looked at a long list of ways to fund stormwater. So obviously, through the tax revenue, through development-related charges, which obviously are good for new development, but not really good for sustaining your, your whole operations and maintenance. Fees and charges, similar to the water rate charge, that you charge something proportional to the amount the user is, is using. And there's different types of stormwater fees that we looked at. And we also talked about subsidies and grants, which are great for one-off projects, for a large capital project that you're planning for. You know, you can get funding through the disaster mitigation funding program, but again, that's not a good source of funding for sustainably funding operations and maintenance of your system. So we looked at three main calculate, main methods that we actually did calculations for, and that's what we're going to be presenting tonight. And the first one is always the existing conditions. So we looked at the existing tax methods, also always important to show the existing, so how are things going to change for people? Then we looked at a stormwater fee that's a flat fee, everyone, it's very straightforward, and people in different tiers or different property types would all pay the same amount. And then we looked at some variability fee where we would actually scale the fee based on property size and runoff coefficient, so runoff area. So that's the one that's, you know, more equitable, but maybe more complicated. So I think we also wanted to recap that, to understand that as we're moving forward through this presentation, we're going to be presenting the implications for the rates for these different rate structures and how they're going to impact different people and different property types. So the fees is grouped, are grouped into different property type groups. So this just recaps that. So the low-density residential, when we say low-density residential, it's single-family detached, semi-detached, link homes, and we've also included farms in that property, in that property type group. High-density residential are duplexes, all the way up to sixplexes, townhouses, multifamily homes, condominiums. And then non-residential, you've got parks, commercial industrial, government mixed-use, miscellaneous, and developed. So how the stormwater fee is calculated, if the runoff area is calculated using the area of a property and the runoff coefficient, and the runoff coefficient comes from your engineering guidelines. A runoff coefficient is a, a number between zero and one, where zero, it means no runoff comes from that property. So you multiply zero by the area, you get nothing. And then one means that all of the runoff, every piece of rain that hits that, that piece of property, all of it runs off and everywhere in between. So if you have a small runoff coefficient, like point two, point three, that would be, you know, parklands, things that have a lot of absorption capability, and then something like you can see on the slide, point nine, would be industrial, commercial, the highly impervious areas. And then there's a footnote I'm reminded, reminding myself to note that parks and farms have been altered to zero. In your guidelines, it was a 0.35, but we've altered that down to a zero for our calculation purposes, and that was through discussions with the project team and also our experience with other municipalities that that would be the best approach there. Okay, so here we can see the proportion of the, the total need that Catherine was talking about, that 24.4 million per year. Where is that going to come from? Under the tax base method, you can see that the low-density residential community, those properties, will be paying together, they'll be paying 14.6 million towards the stormwater fee under the new requirement, the new revenue requirement. High-density, 3.2, and non-residential would be 6.6. That's what, that's, if we stay with the tax method, that's what it's going to be. Still be an increase because you're increasing the amount we're asking for to fund the system. But if we go to the runoff method, it really changes, it sort of turns itself on its head a bit, and you can see the non-residential community is paying the lion's share because they're producing more of the runoff to the, to the system. So these are the fees that we actually looked at in detail and did some calculations for actually what the fees would be, so you can actually see what they would be, and we've got quite a few examples to go through with you tonight to sort of help it seem more real and see more relatable. So the dedicated tax levy, of course, we know about, is based on assessed value, and then we've got a tiered flat option, so everyone in each tier would pay the same. So everyone in low-density residential would pay the same fee, everyone in high-density would pay another fee, and then non-residential would have their own fee, and everybody in that tier would pay the same fee. And then you've got a variable fee based on the runoff area that I was talking about, so the property area times the runoff coefficient, that's called the variable fee. Okay, so let's start with high, high-density residential properties. So first of all, let's look, we've got these three examples for you. We've got an average townhome on the left, an average condo, and keep in mind that condos are going to be paying per condo unit. So the bill would go to the condo community, and they would divvy it up to each condo owner because they own those properties. And then the average plaques, so those are assuming that that's a rental, so that, that fee would go to the owner of the whole building, and they would divvy it up however they decide to divvy it up, take it off their rent or increase their rent or however that, they deal with wastewater bills probably the same way. So you can see that they all have the same runoff coefficient because they're all high-density residential. But the property area changes significantly, so you've got 200 meters squared for that nice large townhouse there, and then you've got just 126 square meters for the condo, and you've got a plaque that's got about 715 square meters. Those are average kind of numbers. And then you can see the assessed value changes greatly too. So you've got like over half a million dollars for that townhouse, just under half a million for the condo, and then over a million for that plaque, assuming that there's multiple dwelling units in there. So we look at the fees underneath, the annual charges, those are annual charges that these customers would receive under these various options. The tax bill, just based on the assessed value. So it's your tax rate multiplied by the, the assessed value. The tiered rate, you see, they all play the same. So all of those three properties that we're showing as examples, under the tiered system, we've calculated an average for all the high-density residential people, and on average, they would pay $57 a year towards the stormwater fee. And then under the variable fee, where we're multiplying the property area times the runoff coefficient, so this is really more proportional within, within the high-density residential tier, it becomes more proportional on the, the property size. So you can see that the, the 212-square-meter townhouse would be paying 71, the small condo would be paying a little less at $43, and then that plaques, again, that would be divided up to the billing, to the dwelling units, but it would be 240 for the total 750-square-meter area. So that's high-density residential. Okay, so the next one, same thing, we're going to look at low-density residential, so here's our three examples. You've got a small single-family home, you've got an average single-family home, it's kind of big to me, but I live in a town that has smaller houses, I guess, and then a large single-family home, which is really big. Again, note, they all have the same runoff coefficient, and they all have the same tiered flat rate. But you've got a property area of like just over 300, then almost 700, and then just over 1,000 square meters, and you've got assessed values ranging from just under a million, a million, and then closer to $2 million. a million, and then closer to $2 million assessed values. So the assessed values, excuse me, shows you the tax rate, so you can see for the higher assessed values, they would be contributing more to the stormwater system based on their assessed values. So again, based on the new revenue requirement that you've been shown tonight by Catherine, that would be the new contribution from their taxes that would be going to stormwater for each of those properties if you stay on the tax. If you decide to go with a tiered fee, approximately, they're all going to be paying $216. So I think this is something that we like to think about, and you're going to think about with your constituents, that they're going to come to you and say, well, my neighbor's got twice the size property, and we're both low-density residential, and why are we paying the same amount? Yeah, it's not exactly equitable with a tiered fee, but it's not a huge difference. It's like, you know, a month, this is the annual fee, so it's only going to be a matter of dollars in the monthly fee between one and the other. So it's not a huge difference. So I think in our experience, when you see something like that, you don't get a lot of pushback from, from property owners. But again, you can go to a variable rate, which would be more fine-tuned to the property area, where they actually measure the area, multiply it by the coefficient, and you can see you've got the small, medium, and large variable charge, same as you've got the small, medium, and large property size. Okay? Okay, so non-residential is where it comes in handy, and I need to remind myself of one thing because I always get tricky here. Okay, so these are three examples of non-residential properties. You've got a small business, it's really small, it's only 165 square meters on that property, but you can see the whole thing's paved, there's no grass there at all. And then you can see another property in the middle, medium-sized, 8,000 square meters, pretty big, also all paved. And then you can see a large commercial lot, over 33,000 square meters, all paved. They all have the same runoff coefficient, seems reasonable to me, .9, they're all paved, that seems like a good runoff coefficient. The assessed value, half a million dollars, $4 million, $14 million. So under the tax rate, they'd all contribute proportional to their assessed value. Under the tiered flat rate, all three of these properties would pay the same fee. But under the variable rate, you're going to go from $63 on the left to 12,000, 12,500 on the right. That's a big difference. That's where we see the potential for people saying, hey, that's not fair. If you're under tiered rate and you're all paying $3,000, the little guy's going to be saying, hey, that's not fair. So that's where I think that the inequity comes within the non-residential properties between the tiered and the variable. Okay. So here's the summary of that that we just saw, and the one thing I wanted to add that I, the medium property, yeah, the medium residential, the, sorry, the non-residential small property is actually based on 165 square meters, so similar to the high-density residential. So because for the residential, for the non-residential properties, just to make those calculations, we had to assume a property size or else we can't do the calculations. So those numbers on the bottom just tell you, you know, what property size, so you can compare apples to apples. Okay. So our observation so far is that using the runoff area to distribute the stormwater costs is fairer way to allocate the fees to contribute, to allocate the fees more to the properties that contribute more to the stormwater system. Both flat rates and variable rates result in lower fees for low-density residential versus the tax method. Both flat fees and variable fees result in lower fees for high-density residential properties versus the tax method. And variable fees result in lower fees for small, non-residential fees, properties versus the tax method. The fat fleet, fat, the flat fee is not equitable for the application across all non-residential properties, small, medium, and large. Based on the sample, the variable fee is the most equitable for all three property groups. And based on the sample, the difference between the flat fee and the average variable fee for the low-density and high-density residential is small, less than $20. Did I miss the guiding principles there? Okay, so the guiding principles that we talked about at the beginning, we're bringing those forward in the evaluation of these three methods that we've just reviewed together. So we looked at them for the tax method, fair and equitable, no. The tiered system, partly, definitely for the residential properties, less so for the non-residential properties. And the variable storm fee, yeah, it's fair and equitable for everybody. It's the most fair and equitable one. Affordable and financially sustainable, tax method, partly, maybe even say no, because, you know, sometimes the needs that are required for your stormwater management system, like all infrastructure, they get passed down the line. All of Canada has underfunded its infrastructure, and that can, that has the potential to potentially go on, so it's only partly sustainable as the tax method. But both the tiered fee and the variable fee are definitely sustainable methods. Are they justifiable? Tax method, again, it's partly justifiable. The tiered and the flat fee, I think they are justifiable because they're proportional to the runoff that's coming from the property. Are they climate change resilient? The tax method, no. And the tiered and the flat, and the variable fee, yes. Are they simple to understand? Yep, the tax fee is definitely simple to understand, people are used to it. It's what they, it's what they currently have. Simple to understand and simple to manage, the tiered fee is partly, and the variable fee is partly. I would say that a lot of people ask, is the variable fee much more complicated than just the fat, flat fee? Well, not as much as you would think, because you really only have to calculate it the once. And once you've done the calculation, it's set. Then you would only make changes if the, if the runoff coefficient changed or that property. So, you know, every time you, you have a billing cycle, you'll have a billing file that goes to your biller. If you have a property that redevelops, for example, you would have to get them to, if something changes, which is not that often, then you would have to change it. So it's not that big of a deal to administer. It is more laborsome to calculate, but it's only a one-time calculation. So you can see, this just sort of puts it, it's finding that sort of balance between being simple to understand and administer and fair and equitable. So you go from one side to the other. I think that as I've sort of tried to describe that, you know, it doesn't have to be one or the other, you could have like a flat fee, a tiered flat fee for residential, and a variable fee for the ICI or non-residential properties. And in fact, that's what most municipalities that currently have a fee have chosen to do. Not all of them, but that's what most of them have chosen to do. Okay, I'm going to briefly talk about incentive programs. So all of that that we've showed you, we, that evaluation is a draft that we've done with the project team, and we're going to take that out to public, and we're going to solicit feedback from yourselves, and we're going to finalize that evaluation with input from the public and yourselves as well. We're also going to solicit feedback on this incentive programs. And incentive programs are really one of the key parts of a stormwater rate. If you have a stormwater rate, then you can provide credits. And credits incentivize doing the right thing on your property. So if you have, for example, a Walmart, when they develop, part of the procedure is they have to show that they're doing stormwater management on their property. They're retaining a certain amount of the flow so you don't flood your sewers, they are providing stormwater quality treatment. But once they've got their permit to develop, how do you show that those oil grit separators and those ponds are being maintained when they're on private property? If you have an incentive program, you've got the carrot instead of the stick. So for me, this is one of the best parts about a stormwater fee, is this incentivizes people to do the right thing on their properties. And it's good for climate change, it's good for green infrastructure development, it provides more resiliency in your system. We're hearing about these sponge cities, these green cities, you can really see this happening when it's financially rewarding for people to do so. Okay, many municipalities are providing incentive properties, so it's very common, ever, I think every, every municipality in Ontario that has a fee has some sort of incentive program. There's two main types, there's credits. When we say credits, we mean ongoing fee reduction. That means if you've been evaluated and your fee is X amount of money, but you show that you're doing something on your property, like a stormwater pond or an oil grit separator, you get your fee reduced. Every year, every month, you'll get just a lower fee, so it's ongoing. Rebates are a one-time reward for implementing an onsite measure. So those would tend to be, for me, they tend to be smaller things, potentially, not necessarily, but, so a rebate could be like for $100 for a rain barrel. Or if you implement a rain garden, we'd give you a free consultation and a bag of gravel or something. So that's like a one-time incentive to do a one-time project. So that's the main difference between credits and rebates. So stormwater fee credit programs, they allow for fee reduction for landowners who implement onsite stormwater management practices. Maybe not so important for someone who's only paying, you know, $12, $20 a month for their stormwater fee, they may not be that interested. But if you have a big industrial property that's spending thousands on their stormwater fee, they're going to be very interested in reducing their fee. Provides credit for facilities that provide flooding and erosion protection, benefits water quality by doing water quality treatment, and other environmental benefits for non-messures and activities that promote good housekeeping practices. So they do require certification, so there is some effort to administer a credit program. But in our experience, there's only one other municipality that I'm aware of off the top of my head that actually has a credit program for residential fees. They don't get a lot of uptake, even the way they do have one. But the ones that have them for industrial and non-residential properties, they have some uptake, but not as much as you think, unfortunately, so. So advantages, they lead to reduction in the town's capital operating costs, like it really would actually reduce the amount of sediment and grit that's, and oil that's getting into your system. It can seriously reduce erosion if those stormwater practices are well-maintained on, as you've asked them to do through your, your development planning process. Reduces impacts of development on the environment, provides financial incentives to landowners, ensures maintenance of those private properties, and promotes stormwater education and understanding. The disadvantages, like I was saying, it's the ongoing administration cost, significantly higher administration cost to administer for a residential program. An effort to communicate the application process and provide that assistance for people, and the uncertainty with the uptake, and its high impact on revenue. If you have higher than, higher than anticipated uptake, your revenue would go down, so that would need to be rebalanced in your next iteration of your stormwater fees. So stormwater fees tend to get updated every five years or so. So there's lots of great examples in Ontario of rebate programs, some run through the municipalities, some through the regions, some through the conservation authorities, there's rain barrel programs, downspout disconnection, backflow, prevention valves, et cetera. There's lots of in-person advisory services that can be provided, published how-to information, lots of conservation authorities have fantastic literature on how to build a rain garden, how to disconnect your downspout, those kinds of things. And discounted prices for materials to construct rain gardens, permeable pavements, all of that good stuff. The advantages of rebate programs, the town alone or in partnership with the conservation authority or the region can use it as a service and expertise and resources for bulk purchasing for, to offer these materials. So you can actually get a really good discount on rain barrels, for example, if you buy 1,000 of them. The town controls the amount of financial incentives that's available, so you could say, I have 100 rain barrels, that's how much I budgeted for, and it's first come, first served, for example. There's a lower time and resource commitment of the program to administer, for sure. And the disadvantage is the unknown uptake and staff resource requirements and revenue impacts, so it's hard to measure. Some examples of credit programs and rebate programs that are being currently used in Ontario. Most of the municipalities that have a credit program, they limit the total amount that an individual can get a credit for. So you can't get a credit all the way down to zero, because you still need to pay for some stormwater funding in the municipality. So Kitchener, the maximum credit amount is 45%, Mississauga, 50, Guelph, 50, just as examples. So in Kitchener there, the non-residential properties and multi-residential units, greater than five units, and residential properties, Kitchener, they all can get a credit. And I believe I'm not mistaken, but I think if you asked the city of Kitchener how many residential people apply for credits, they would say very few, like a handful a year. The non-residential ones, for sure, they're getting, you know, a reasonable amount of those. Mississauga, non-residential properties and multi-residential properties, so all your ICI properties can apply for a credit in Mississauga, and also your big condo buildings, apartment buildings, townhouse complexes, those kind of multi-residential properties, they can also apply for credits. The same in Guelph, non-residential properties can apply for a credit, and multi-residential properties with greater than five units can apply for a credit. Guelph in particular, I'm very familiar because I live in Guelph, they have a great rebate program for residential properties for all sorts of green infrastructure initiatives, which promotes education and understanding and participation, but it's much easier to administer, and Guelph has the, only the single tier for residential properties. They all pay the same amount, and there's no credit for residential properties, but they offer a very comprehensive, non-residential credit program. So we're going to take that out to engagement as well and get feedback on the credit programs, what people like, what they don't like, and we'll also be looking forward to hearing from you to make our final decision of how we would, are going to or not going to implement a credit or rebate program. I'm going to hand over to my friend and my colleague, Alicia Evans, now, to talk about our engagement approach.
Hello. So thank you so much through you, Mayor. I just wanted to talk a little bit about, more about the engagement program. So, sorry, am I too loud? I'm really close to the mic here. So engagement is going to be a really important part of this project and this study. And back in the very first council workshop, Catherine did present the three-round approach that we're taking. So I do want to recap that, you know, we really spent time in round one to set up that base knowledge and make sure that we had the resources, the materials available to help educate people about stormwater, stormwater management, and the importance of funding it. So round two will be the first real engagement round where we go out and we speak to the public and we seek feedback. So as Pippi mentioned, we will be presenting the short list of funding options, so what was presented today, I will say in more simplified, perhaps less detail, so that it is more digestible. And we will be talking about the incentive program as well and seeking feedback into that. So that's really the focus of this first or this second round of engagement, but it is not the last chance that we'll have to speak to the community. And there is round three where we will be then, once some recommendations have been made based on the evaluation, based on your input and recommendations from staff, then we can take that out for round three and have another conversation. So during this round of engagement, there will be several opportunities to engage with residents, businesses, and property owners in Oakville. So the community survey that we will be launching will be our main tool to gather feedback and input to help inform the evaluation of the funding options and the incentive program options. So this survey, and I should be clear, it's actually a survey in two streams, so we, it's one, one for residential property owners and one for non-residential property owners. And this will be available for the duration of the public engagement period. Presentations and public meetings will be held in late September, early October. We will join the mayor's roundtable meeting in September, host a virtual public meeting on October 1st, followed by an in-person public meeting, and I'll send, I'll provide you with more details shortly. And then we're also going to host an information session for members of the business community, property owners, sorry, those non-residential property owners in October as well, on October 9th. And then, as needed, town staff will set up pop-up booths throughout the community to help promote the engagement, and additional stakeholder meetings may be scheduled as needed too. So as I mentioned, the community-wide survey will be the main tool for the engagement program to gather the community feedback needed at this stage of the study. So the survey will launch, like I said, at the start of the engagement period, which is actually next Monday, September 16th, and it will run for five weeks. And the survey includes a series of questions based around three key engagement topics. So the, so, sorry, three key engagement objectives. So the very first objective is, we want to understand the community's values regarding stormwater management and the town's 30-year stormwater management needs. So these are just some sample questions from the surveys. So these are just some sample questions from the surveys. So we'll ask questions like, how important are the town's stormwater management services to you? And how important is it that the town implements stormwater management improvements to increase resiliency to climate change? We would also like to get feedback on the short list of funding options, so the, you know, the property tax, the flat rate, and the variable rate. So to do this, we will ask questions like, do you think that property owners with more hard surfaces that create more stormwater runoff should contribute more to the town's stormwater costs? And how should residential and non-residential property owners pay for stormwater management? And finally, the third objective is to get feedback to inform possible financial incentive programs. So we really want to understand things like, you know, if the town offered a one-time rebate to help you reduce the costs of implementing stormwater measures like rain barrels or rain gardens, how likely would you be to do that? And if the town offered ongoing credits to help reduce a stormwater management or a stormwater fee, how likely would you be to implement measures on your property like storm ponds or treatment facilities? So as I said, you know, knowing that the content around stormwater management and the various funding options can be pretty complex and technical, we will encourage people to visit the webpage, read the, or sorry, watch the video, and definitely attend one of the community meetings to learn more if they're able to. And that's before, you know, we'll encourage them to do that before they complete the survey, if possible. So community members can visit the town's webpage to learn more about the study and how to participate, to access the registration links to the virtual public meeting and virtual meeting for non-residential property owners, as well as access the online survey. So just another reminder before I wrap up, the engagement will launch next Monday, September 16th, and the online survey will be available until October 18th. The virtual public meeting will take place on October 1st from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. via Zoom. The next night, October 2nd, we will host an in-person public meeting at Glen Abbey Community and Cultural Center. And the in-person meeting will also include a presentation, and I should clarify, I think the presentation is going to start at 6:30, not 7:00, so that's my mistake. And also to clarify, it will be the same presentation as we will share at the virtual public meeting. And then finally, a meeting specifically for non-residential property owners will be hosted on October 9th, and we have confirmed that the time will be from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. And that's all I have for you today. Thank you.
So just a few closing remarks before we open it up for questions. I think, as you can see through our work with ACOM and the analysis completed to date, it's become clear that there are some advantages to moving towards a stormwater fee model and distributing those costs based on runoff. It would provide an opportunity to shift more to a pay-per-use model, similar to the region's water wastewater or hydro, where property owners pay based on usage, or in our case here, they would pay based on our impact to the stormwater system. While the work to date completed provides a high-level overview and allows us to compare the fee results under those three different methods, the tax, the flat, and the variable, and we can evaluate them against those guiding principles. We do continue to do additional analysis to look at the more detailed calculations for, within those different property groups, to better understand where the greatest impacts may lie. So I showed this roadmap to you before. So this is sort of the long-winding stages of our plan. As we noted in the last session, the first stage was really focused on education and promotion of, you know, what stormwater management is in Oakville and why we're exploring these funding options. We're now in stage two, where we're actually diving into those different options and doing some analysis. And as Alicia outlined, we'll be heading into that public engagement period where we're really trying to solicit feedback from the different resident groups on those different fee options and what it might mean to them, and as well as those credit incentive programs, and how much interest there would be for us to implement something like that. So after we gather all that feedback, we hope to report back to you in December with some recommendations on which fee method we would prefer, and as well as any credit or rebate programs that we think we should be offering along with that. Then we will go back out to consultation with the public and kind of convey what those preferred options are, what it might mean to them more specifically, and get some more additional feedback. Before we come back to you in April of 2025 with our final recommendation, as well as a bit of an overview of the implementation plan and what the steps will take to kind of fully build that building methodology and work towards actually introducing it. So I also just wanted to note, as much as we did show you some fees for today, those aren't necessarily the final fees. There are a few other decisions and considerations that we need to think about. One, for example, are exemptions, like similar to tax or development charges. We do provide subsidies or exemptions for places of worship or not-for-profits. Other considerations may be for the educational institutions and other similar considerations like that. Also, as Pippi noted, if we are looking to implement a credit program or rebate program, there would be a cost to that, which we haven't included in the seven-hundred-and-thirty-million to date, as well as those administration costs. We really would like to get more feedback from the public first on what we want to recommend before we start figuring out what that might cost or the administration of it. And last but not least, as much as we do need to grow the amount of funding that we need for our stormwater infrastructure, it is a thirty-year plan, and we have the ability to phase some of that infrastructure work. So we could also look at phasing the increased need for the fee over a few years. So just to wrap up the next steps, as we mentioned, we are doing the round two public engagement in September and October, coming back to you in December with the preferred funding method and credit rebate options. We'll be doing work to formally develop that implementation plan through January and March alongside with doing that round three of public engagement, and hopefully come back with a final approved fee recommendation and implementation plan in April of 2025. So that concludes my remarks, and we can open it up for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You've got a few. I wonder if you could clarify when implementation would begin on that scheme, on that time flow that you had? Would you start collecting the fee in 2025? Is that what you're suggesting?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe we'd be able to start collecting in 2025. We would also need a bylaw and probably approve it through the budget. We would need some time to actually kind of set up the billing system and whatnot. We think that might take approximately a year. So I think it could be as early as, I think January 2027 would make the most sense.
I see. Okay. I think that's an important detail for everybody. And could you explain whether you're replacing with this, if we went with the fee program, would we be replacing the use of tax to deal with stormwater, rainwater? Or would we be keeping the amount? I mean, one of your slides suggested that four percent of our tax is going to this now, and we need approximately, an increase of approximately that amount of money again. So it wasn't clear in your presentation whether you're going to wind up continuing to fund it partly through tax and then add the extra money through the fee, or get all of the stormwater costs into the fee?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think if we chose to go with the stormwater fee, for simplicity, it might make sense rather than trying to fund in two different spots. We would recommend moving it all to a fee and taking some of it off the tax base.
Okay.
I don't know, Nancy, did you have more to add to that? Okay.
I'm fine with that. Either way, I just wanted it to be clear as to timing and sources.
For sure.
And so my questions are well answered. And most of council has questions. We'll start with Councilor Elgar.
Your worship, just a point of order.
Thank you very much, through Mayor Burton. Sorry.
Councilor Elgar, could you wait one second? Councilor Chisholm has a point of order.
Just a point of order. My camera's not working, so can you put me in the queue for questioning, please?
Yes, certainly.
Thank you.
Can you move to a different station as well?
I'll see if I can get IT to help me on this one. Thank you.
But anyway, you're in the queue. And now even more of council are going to be asking questions. Councilor Elgar, thank you for your patience.
Thank you to Mayor Burton. I must say, this is one of the better presentations I've seen, and I think it's fantastic. It is obvious that residential is paying a disproportionate amount of money compared to the non-residential. But I'm concerned when we go out to the public and engage them, unless you show the slide of how disproportionate it is today, you're not going to engage anybody about anything. And I'm just wondering how we're going to do it properly. Like in the GTA, I'd be very interested in knowing those that have already gone with the variable storm management fee in a little more detail. I know you mentioned Mississauga, and, you know, we talked about Guelph and that. I'm more concerned with where we are living now, like in the GTA, if that's possible. But I do think we have to be pretty more precise and not just generalities. And I'm also concerned, I don't know how people are going to find out about this. Like I really, I'd like to know what we're going to do. Like I know the mayor's roundtable, but what is the audience, what's the number of audience for the roundtable? And will emails be sent out or to advise people of this virtual meeting that's going to take place October 1st? Like everything you're going to do is good, but I'm afraid nobody's going to know about it. And I think it's great, like you really, this is a great program you've got. I just, I'm very concerned that people will not know about it, and they won't realize just how much the residential are subsidizing all the other things and the hard surfaces. That we have to be a little more detailed when we go instead of generalities.
So through you, Mayor Burton. So we do plan to get fairly specific with the presentations in the meeting. Some of those slides that you saw with the pies, we think are very good messages to kind of help explain what it means to pay for the fee, the stormwater services on a tax base versus the runoff methodology. So the presentation will be very similar to what you've seen today. As Alicia mentioned, we might just change some of the language a little bit so that it's easier for the public to understand. So I hope that helps with your concerns. As far as getting the message out, we are, we're doing our best to promote it. We are also planning on giving you some materials to help you also promote. We're looking to all of you on council to also advocate for coming to those public meetings and participating in the survey and whatnot as well. So we do look for any suggestions you'll offer. So we do have a little example prepared that you could slip into one of your newsletters or send out by email or whatnot as well, and we'll load that up on the council portal.
That is fantastic. That's what I'm really looking for, something we can send out on our email distribution list. And if all councillors did this, I think you would have a great turnout virtually at the meeting, and there'd be a lot of people voicing their concerns. And I think this is great, what you're doing. And when do you think that would be available to give to councillors to give people a heads up?
We could probably send it out to you Friday. We've already drafted it.
Oh, even better. Appreciate, thank you so much. Great presentations, and I like where it looks like we're going. And it's thank you. Thank you through you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Elgar. I think the reference to a mayor's roundtable was shorthand for the community leaders' roundtable that I run at the end of every month.
Yeah, sorry.
The leaders of every group in town are on that distribution list. Next, we have Councilor Kathy Duttick.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you to staff, have we, and I dare say we have, but approached the provincial government regarding funding for this program? I would assume that other municipalities have as well. And the reason I'm asking that is because we've been advocating for quite a long time to have the building code altered so that we can finally capture basement renovations in the building code. Because especially in the larger built-up areas, where we're seeing people going with nine, ten, even eleven-foot basements, that has a huge impact on the stormwater management, not only on the adjacent properties, but also the whole, you know, surrounding area, basically. And so to sort of prove that point, it sort of reinforces it.
So through you, Mayor Burton, I guess I'll start off and maybe ask Pippi to step in as well. I can't speak to the building code piece.
No.
What I can speak to is we do constantly look for other sources of government funding and have applied in the past to the disaster mitigation fund without any success to date, I will say. So I think it is one in your package of materials in the past of areas that council could help promote when they have those opportunities, like ammo and whatnot, for our applications when we submit them. But I don't know if you wanted to speak to the building code?
Through you, Mayor Burton. I did want to mention, because it did come up last time I was here, the basements and the sump pump issue that you guys have here, major issue, and it's great that you're addressing it through trying to change your building codes. That's a really great initiative. But the region already has a rebate program for the sump pumps sort of issue because it's not actually a stormwater issue. It's taking groundwater and putting it into the sewer and going to the wastewater treatment plant. So it is actually more a burden on the wastewater system. It's not actually a stormwater issue as much necessarily. So I think that the region already has that rebate program, so we would leave that whole issue with them.
Okay, thank you. And speaking about, you talked about the variable in terms of the various properties. Again, if you have something, especially with the intensification in built-up areas, okay, south of the Q E, I'm thinking largely, where we don't have stormwater management ponds and we have to rely on the infrastructure. When you have, and I think Pippi remarked on it, things that change, whether through development or whatever, would have an impact that would cause their rate to go up, given the fact that just the sheer massing on a property is no longer going to provide that, you know, permeable surface to be able to drain? Is that something that we would be looking at in terms of the variable?
Through, through Mr. Mayor, Councilor Duttick, can you just repeat the question just to make sure I capture it properly? Sorry.
Yeah. No, no, no problem. I'm just thinking in terms of when Pippi remarked on the fact that if things change on a property, that may impact their rate, okay? And she did cite at one point the development on a property. And I'm thinking where somebody's gone from a small bungalow. And I'm thinking where somebody's gone from a small bungalow and somebody's redeveloped into, within their right, much more massive build on a single dwelling property, would that not cause a rate increase?
Okay. I will, I'll try to attempt to answer that, and then Pippi probably could jump in. So if we pick the option of a variable rate, then as if the property changes, there will be potentially a change for their fee. But if we pick the flat rate, then, you know, then everyone is just the total amount divided by how many properties everybody play flat, then that options will be a little bit less equitable. So I think what Pippi was explaining is depending on the type of rate and the way that you divide it, it changes the way that we will measure it and update it over time. So I think the conclusion there was that it's more fair, and it is more equitable if we actually look at the land size because then the bigger sized lands will get paid more versus the smaller sized land will pay less.
Yeah, thank you. Because I think that, again, in terms of the public, in terms of their buy-in, and again, I guess that's something we're going to have to weigh when we decide on what kind of structure we go with, is somebody will invariably say, why am I paying the same, I'm in a small bungalow, as somebody who's just come in and put in a huge, for lack of a better word, mansion, as they often refer to it? So, you know, that's for another day. The other question I have is, are we going to clearly articulate that this is not like an insurance policy? My concern is that people will turn around and say to us, wait a minute, I pay this tax. Why has my property been flooded, or why has this happened? I thought by paying this, I'm protected. So I guess my question is, how do we clearly articulate to them this is, as best we can, a preventative measure to introduce, but it's not a cure-all?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That is something we'll have to manage. But I think the part we're trying to emphasize there is that you, this is something you're already paying for through your taxes. So as much as, and these are services we've, we do provide already and will continue to provide, we're just sort of shifting how you pay for those services.
Yeah.
Right? It's not really, for all intents and purposes, something new that we're doing.
Other than the dollar figure, which I think is invariably where they will focus, and they'll think of it as a new tax. So again, that speaks to my other question, and that is, when it comes time to introduce this, and again, this is farther down the road, will we have messaging on the tax bill stating this is stormwater management fee and a dollar figure, so they can see what it is? And maybe some sort of an explanation as to, you were currently paying this, and now with the new one, this is combined? I think, you know, you answered that basically with the mayor's question regarding, is it replacing it and augmenting it? So I'll leave that with you. That's later on down the road, but I just, it's a concern.
We have started to think about that and how we might show some of that on the tax bill.
Okay, okay.
There's a few different options we can consider. And I think the key piece is really just through our promotion and education so that people understand what this fee covers and why we're doing it.
Okay. And I guess too, the, no matter how many times we try to explain it, again, the education component as to what is regional and what is town, in other words, what is sanitary and what is stormwater? And so those will be a part of messaging because they'll invariably point their finger at something else and say, wait a minute, I've got a rebate program at the region. Why am I doing this here? You know. Anyway, thank you very much. Great report. Exciting.
Thank you, Councillor Duttick. I think I speak for everyone when I say we all probably agree that we always need labeling, clear labeling and clear messaging. Councillor Haslett-Dill.
Thank you, Mayor Burton. Through you. Thank you very much for those videos. They were awesome. Did you track how many views you got on those videos?
We are tracking that, so we could probably give you those numbers. I don't think to date there's been a lot of attraction, but I suspect that as we get into this engagement process, people will start to find that page and see those videos. But I can get you those numbers if you're interested.
It's just, a lot of effort went into them. They are the educational piece, and it tells us, whatever medium you put it out on, not just on the website, but actually directing people to it, whether or not, what resource, to Councillor Elgar's point, how are we going to make sure people are going to show up and show up with some education as well? So I'd be curious if, to understand the views and where they're getting the information. So where are they coming to get to the town site? My question about tax versus tax plus a fee has now been answered. That's great. At the open house, will there be a open Q and A? Or will you do the presentation and then make them walk the boards?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Our attention is to start with a presentation, open it up for Q and A, and then allow also time to wander around and look at the boards and ask individual staff who are there any specific questions they may have. Because not everyone is comfortable speaking in a mic and opening their question in an open forum. So we're trying to accommodate everyone's needs that way. Although I guess we will also promote the email, the address that we have, if people want to follow up with any questions that they want to submit to me directly, and I can follow up with them personally if they need me.
I've noted it for our newsletter. I'm very happy that you have it. And I'm appreciative that you're going to have a diversity of Q and A because sometimes when someone asks a question, that's what sparks other people to say, oh, I don't really understand that, and they may have an opportunity to get clarity at the boards. Okay. And my last two points. One is, do we know what percentage of our properties across the town are low residential? And more importantly, what that acreage or, you know, how it measures out? It's just, do we know that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We do know that. I know when we started to look at this, I did make note, just the total number of properties, 90% of them are residential. So low density and high density combined, and only 10% are the non-residential. I can break out and let you know what those square foot areas are for those different categories as well, if you're interested.
It's just the magnitude of what each category then impacts on stormwater that I was curious about. And then my other is just around, how do I say this? The scale of a home, you know, to Councillor Duttick's point. So you've got a smaller home, and then you've got a much bigger home, and the neighborhoods are revolving so much. And does Guelph or Kitchener or any of those who've done this have any feedback around? If you went with a tiered, but, sorry, if you went with flat across residential, how you, how you create that incentive? Like, is it a credit because you, when you built that bigger home, then made a conscious, you know, did the swales, did greater permeable surfaces? Like, how do we capture that without creating this huge administrative burden?
I'll pass that one over to Pippi. I don't think there's an easy answer to that one.
Through you, Mayor Burton. No, I don't think there is an easy answer to that. I think that, like I was saying, in Guelph, they have one residential tier. But because even a small house compared to the McMansions, there's only a few dollar difference in the monthly charge. No one really complains about that. So yes, they're bigger, and the smaller guy's paying the same as the bigger person. It's not that big of a difference financially, so it tends to, no, it's not such a huge deal. But for the commercial properties, it's a huge deal because the scope of difference is massive. We're going from, you know, a hundred dollar fee a month to thousands of dollars a fee a month. So if they're all paying the same, that's really not fair. So that's where that really comes in there.
So thanks for refreshing me on that. So, okay, so that jumps out.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Giddings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. I as well appreciate the complexity of what's before us this evening. Things like the, using the CVA to base the billing or the charge upon. Our CVA is so woefully out of date and inaccurate. You have homes that are appraised at a third of the value or half the value. And so I have difficulty and I can't see impact straightening that out anytime soon. I appreciate our consultant this evening talking about sump pumps. That was me that raised that last time. And sump pumps going to a municipal sewer would be one thing. In our area, primarily south of the Q E W, those sump pumps are going to a ditch. We have a very large house that completed 16,000, 17,000 square feet, and none of their water is hitting the ditch in front of their place because they have a large pit that they were directed to have. And being in alluvial silt, that water is not hitting the system. So I don't know how we would account for that. And on page 12, they had the average townhome, average condo, and average, average plex. And the average plex is going to be paying six times the average condo because of the property area size. Yet that runoff may be fully contained on the property, depending whether it's clay, whether it's sand, alluvial silt, whatever. So I appreciate the challenges ahead of us. How do we work through that process in terms of market value assessment and the porosity of the soil? And having difficulties getting my head around, to be quite honest with you, in terms of how we move forward with this. By trying to make it fair, it introduces a lot of additional things to check.
I'll let Pippi answer. Thanks.
Through you, Mayor Burton. So those are really good points, and they're definitely points that we're accustomed to dealing with in every stormwater rate program that we've implemented. And, you know, we've done quite a lot together. Alicia and I have been on the team, I don't know, at least this is our fifth one together at least, and we've done at least 14 in Ontario. So it is common to have these unique groups. So if you have an area that's not connected to the stormwater system, that usually comes out in the public engagement system. And then we have to consider, you know, special areas, special policies. You saw what happened in Hamilton. All of a sudden, the agricultural properties were saying, oh, wait, we need special considerations. So we had to back up and look at a special, another tier, another rate. So that will come out in the engagement process, which ones? In our experience, every municipality is unique. Every municipality has a certain area that has a certain, they drain to the river directly or the lake, or they have rural boundary that should be considered differently. Everyone is unique, and so we will see through the public engagement process. So I would say that Oakville has done a fantastic job of doing these videos to sort of emphasize the importance of stormwater out front, sort of priming the public to sort of say, yeah, we do need this infrastructure. We do need to pay for it. We do currently have an inequitable way. Okay, I've got a problem. This isn't fair for me. Let's hear it. And we're here, we're ready, we're open, and we're going to listen to what the public have to say. So those kind of issues will come out, and we're ready to hear them, so.
Thank you for that. I believe the other comment I had was not just sump pumps, but people with pools that empty their pools and that kind of thing. The one slide I found interesting this evening was places of worship. We have downtown places of worship that are surrounded by hardscape. We have other places of worship that have very large fields at their front, their side, their back. And I'd be surprised if any of that runoff hits the municipal system. So this will be captured throughout the process, and we'll have a quick answer to be able to come back with this.
Well, some municipalities deal with it, that if you're exempt from taxes doesn't mean you're exempt from paying your wastewater fee. You still pay for your water charge. So we kind of tend to look at the exemptions in that light and try and exempt a similar scope of properties. But then if we go to the churches, for example, and say, or places of worship, and say, all of a sudden, you've got this new fee, and they're like, we can't afford it. We're on a fixed income. We don't have the money. There's other methods. We can do cash and lieu programs. There's other, like, if they do an education program with their, you know, Sunday school, for example, we can provide a credit that way. There's very creative ways that we can deal with that, but we can't deal with the issues until we know what they are for this community. So again, that comes out in the public consultation, and we have lots of creative ways and solutions to address each one.
Looking forward to it. Thanks.
Well, thank you for that answer. It's a good reminder that, I mean, and when you said how many you've done, clearly, we're not your first rodeo. So, Councillor O'Meara?
Thank you very much for this presentation. Very interesting. I have some, just some technical questions, and then more on the sort of public consultation side of things. So when you've been doing this in other areas, obviously, the commercial area is the one that's taken, you know, is going to take a rather large impact. Have you had any pushback? Well, the municipality makes me have parking minimums, and they say I have to have 300 spots, and now you're going to charge me on that. I'm thinking of banquet halls, or hotels, or restaurants, or these areas. Have you had to go back and adjust actual parking zoning when you do this? Because people feel, well, you've told me to do this, now you're going to charge me because you've made me do it. How come, how about we just get rid of those parking minimums, and then I'll be happy to just have grass there? Have you had any of that pushback sort of thing?
Through you, Mayor Burton. So in a lot of municipalities have actually chosen to go one step further than the variable fee with the runoff area that we're talking about for Oakville. They've chosen to go with a fully impervious measurement. So each I C I property, you measure the impervious area. So how much grass do they have? How much parking lot? So it could be a giant area, but if they've got mostly grass or impervial pavement, you know, you actually have that measurement. And yes, it's definitely come up for large properties that complain about that they're forced to have parking lots. And again, if that comes up and the city is open to reducing their parking minimums, then that's a great time to do it, especially with the push for public transit, you know, and for people who are working from home more often. We see a lot of empty parking lots, so maybe this is the right time to reduce the parking requirements, and that can come up in public engagement and be brought to the council for consideration. So, but yes, we have seen that before.
Perfect. Thanks for that. And just, how do we deal with the renter versus owner element of all of this? I mean, one of the slides you had, do we give rebates or do we do credits? And if we do credits, how do we make sure that people maintain it? Well, if it's a business that's renting a building and there's some rain gardens over there, you know, how are they incentivized to maintain it as opposed to? I mean, how do you differentiate between what the property owner and the property user does to, for these sorts of credits or rebate systems?
So in our experience, the stormwater fee bill goes to the owner of the property, and they can disperse that to the tenants as they see fit. If they want to get a credit, then the owner can ask them to either, if they're going to pass it down through the rent, then the tenant might say, well, can I build a rain garden? Or the owner might decide that they want to do that. So that's really between the tenant and the owner, but the fee goes to the owner, and they disperse it as they see fit. So again, it's depending on whether the owner will allow them to build a pond or an underground storage unit or whatever it is to get that credit.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, especially with the commercial element, I'm just not sure how much engagement we're going to get from numbered company 10059874. And I mean, it might be a little difficult to engage them on that, but I appreciate some of these details will come down the path a little bit here.
Can I interject and say that we often, in my experience, we often struggle to engage the big properties and the commercial properties? So any ideas to help us engage with them? We do like to do stakeholder engagement one-on-one with some of the very large properties. You know, I can remember sitting down with Toronto Airport, for example, and that was an interesting conversation. But, you know, places like Canada's Wonderland, or, you know, any of your, like, But, you know, places like Canada's Wonderland or, you know, any of your large, the smart centers. You know, we tend to engage them on almost one-on-one stakeholder engagement because, yeah, they sometimes will want to have that, like how much is my fee actually going to be? And how will it work? And behind closed doors.
Okay, perfect. So just with regards to the public consultation element on here, probably the only thing that people care less about, other than storm sewers, is water and wastewater pipes. So I'm a little nervous just with regards to how we're going to get them engaged. Because what they will care about is an extra charge on their bill that they see and they won't care how many times we tried to call them and email them and post it and these sorts of things. So I have been involved in a number of telephone town halls where you get a company, they call twenty thousand people and they have, if you agree, press this button and there's a little presentation. Maybe we could look at doing more of a wide swath or bringing a company in like that that could set up a telephone town hall at eight o'clock. We could try and get people and you can actually do survey data right there by pressing buttons one, three, four and how you feel like this. Maybe that might be a way to engage where people will give you ten minutes on the phone on some evening. Not when Donald Trump is debating Kamal Harris, though maybe we'll work on that in another time. But, and then just, and with regards to that, on slide twenty-seven, the question about, you know, how important is stormwater management to you? I just think we're gonna, I think we're kind of past that. And I'm wondering if we can maybe think, we have to do this. Whether people say it's not important to me, I'd rather have twenty bucks in my pocket. This is something we have to do. So I'm wondering if we, you know, we just get to the point on this and say, hey, here's the problem. We have to deal with it, you know, here are the options and go to it. I think if we try to soft pedal it a bit, you know, hey, this is a fun topic we're talking about. Do you find it important or how would you? I think we're going to lose some people on here a little bit. Just my two cents on that. I think we have to get right down to the quick here and let people know. But, yeah, I think the telephone town hall would be good to try and get as many people as possible engaged on that. But thank you for that and I look forward to hearing how the consultation goes.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Shi?
Thank you, Mayor Burton. So thank you for your presentation. I have two questions. So on the report on page twelve, I see there's the annual average, nearly it's twenty-four point four million with an increase of three point one million each year. Given this annual shortfall, wouldn't it be eleven point eight million, right? Is that possible to be fourteen point nine million next year and eighteen million the year after?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the annual, the total annual need is twenty-four point four million dollars, of which we are already funding about twelve point six million. So we have a shortfall of eight, eleven point eight million. The three point one million that I referenced was a change from the twenty-four million that we said in July. So in July, when we presented these numbers, the total need was twenty-one million dollars. But now we've revised the cost and we see an annual need of twenty-four million dollars. So the three point one was just a reference to what we showed you before in July to now, not to do with the shortfall.
Okay, so that means not every year increased.
No, not every year, sorry. Apologize.
Okay, okay, no problem. So would you, my second question, so would you provide more information on other municipalities who have already implemented this stormwater fee? Especially which they use a flat fee and which they use a variable rate model?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. We did present some of that information in our first council workshop. So we're happy to pull that out for you and share it again. There is a wide range of what everyone is doing. And some, like Pippi mentioned, some are doing flat fee for residential and some are doing variable, some are doing all variable. So there's a really wide range of different methodologies being used. There's no kind of one size fits all. So that's why we're looking to see what best fits for Oakville.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McNeice?
Thank you through your worship. Thank you for the detailed information today. Just a few questions. I believe in Guelph's case, and maybe Pippi can correct me if I'm wrong, but it comes through on the hydro bill or one of the utility bills. So in the case that a few councillors raised, is it going to the tenant or the property owner? I think if it's going through a utility, it would likely go to the tenant that is paying the utilities. And so are we proposing that it would go sort of through the property taxes or?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We are still looking at our billing options and how we would actually send out the bills. So hydro is one option, although for us, depending on which fee methodology you use, it may not be the most easy to administer through them when we have our own tax billing system. So we could look at just adding a new line on our tax bill or we could also look at sending out a totally separate bill. There's a few different options. Those are things that we are working out in our implementation plan. So we can report back on that later on.
Okay, so if we can maybe just note in the evaluation, because I know we've said it would go, you know, say in an ICI, it would go to the property owner, but I think it would go to the tenant if it was through a utility. So maybe just in our evaluation, we can note who it will go to and who would likely pay it.
Sure. Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Our intention is that it would go to the property owner.
Okay, so yeah, I guess.
Who we have on our files as a billing contact.
Okay, perfect. And then just on the chart where it gave different examples and how much they would pay with a new tax versus variable fixed, I think it'd be good to have, you know, I guess we know roughly what they're currently paying, so four percent of their tax bill. So my sort of quick math, you would actually be paying less on the variable fix than what you're currently paying. Am I understanding that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of showing you those different amounts was to keep it all equitable, so using the same twenty-four million dollars between each of the different methods. So you could compare how much you would pay if it was on your tax bill using CVA or how much on a flat fee. We recognize, we didn't want to get confused the whole matter by showing how much you're paying now to what it will become later. I see maybe where you're coming from. There are some examples for, for example, the high-density residential. The amount that they're paying now through their taxes, if we switch to a variable fee or a rate, it could actually be less than what they're paying today without even an increase, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's my quick math on it.
Yeah.
I mean, that could be a good thing to communicate if that's true. Because I mean, that's my quick math as well, is that you'll actually, you know, it'll come out of the, if it's coming out of the tax base, you know, where it is now, that through a fixed or variable, in total, you'll actually pay less if you're residential. But maybe, I don't know, let's just double check that. But that's my quick math. And I think that'd be an important message if that's the case. Okay, just a couple other questions here. Just wonder your thoughts, they've been following Toronto in their pursuit of this and they've decided to just target the ICI sector and not residential. Was that ever considered?
We've been following it a little bit. I didn't hear that they were targeting only ICI. Last I heard, they just sort of put a pause on it altogether. So maybe there's more information. But it becomes very difficult to kind of just separate it out into two different sectors.
I think if I may, through Mr. Mayor, we, stormwater affect us all, the rivers, the harbors, all the storm pipes. Everyone has a piece of the system. The whole system actually is generally interconnected. As we know, the water just flows downhill to the lake. So the way we approached it, it is a townwide type of fee. It isn't about the different sectors, who has bigger and less contribution. What we're trying to do, though, as a townwide fee, is we try to divvy it up a little bit more equitably and more fair. So we have not only think about having a fee only to one sector, not the other. So because we see the whole system impacts all of it and we do need funding for the full system, then everyone has a piece of that pie.
Yeah, and I think it came out from the mayor, the mayor's office in Toronto. And I think they're just saying that the increase will only be seen through the ICNI sector. And based on my math here, I mean, we wouldn't be increasing residential if we go variable or fixed. So we might be sort of saying the same thing.
We certainly have, will have to, we provide an overall general snapshots of the sample, as Pippi mentioned. When we actually get into the implementation plan, which is after the, I'll say, the type of fee options chosen, we will have to actually do the full calculation for every single property for the whole town. And at that time, we'll be coming back to council again and that's where we could verify that calculation that you quickly did that is probably correct. But those are just a sample calculation. It really depends on the size of the land and which option and rate that we pick.
Okay, and final question. I mean, I think the real game changer with this and the ICNI sector is if we can provide enough of incentive for green roofs, blue roofs or permeable pavement. But, I mean, those things are best done when they're being constructed and built because they're expensive to re-engineer the trust to take the additional weight and stuff. But realizing that the credit could only be fifty percent of the fee. So are we able to provide enough incentive to get these game-changing kind of moves of blue roofs, green roofs, permeable pavements, just based on the cost of, you know, constructing it?
Through you, Mayor Burton. Yep, that's a really good point. And I think people often realize quite quickly when they do those calculations that installing some of these measures is quite expensive, especially retroactively. And how long it takes to get their money back through that credit, you know, can be years sometimes. So, but it's worth it to them to reduce their monthly cost right away to get that done. So, what was the, have I answered the question then? Sorry, what's that? Sorry, can you repeat the question again for me?
I'm just trying to imagine, would we be able to provide enough of incentive for either a new build, ICNI, or a retrofit to get like those game changers, which I think are green roofs, blue roofs, permeable pavement, like sponges, I think you were saying? You know, because that's really what we need to keep it out of our pipes. That's where we're going to see, you know, like big change. I'd like, through this program, are we going to be able to provide enough of a lure to do it?
Through you, Mayor Burton. Sorry, yes, that's a good reminder. So the fifty percent cap on the credit, is that what you're talking about? Like how we, yep, okay.
Yeah, yeah, essentially, or, you know, do we, yeah. Or do we need to be searching for other funding sources from other levels of government just based on we can't provide enough of a lure to do those big things?
I mean, there are other programs that provide rebates for installing various green infrastructure that people can apply for, certainly. So that wouldn't be, that wouldn't stop them from getting that as well as getting their credit. And that fifty percent cap isn't carved in stone. I mean, that's what other municipalities have chosen to do to make sure that there's still enough revenue being collected, like Catherine was saying, to maintain the rest of the infrastructure that people use as part of their daily lives, whether it's not even just on their property, but to maintain the roads and the catch basins and all of that. So fifty percent was not arbitrarily chosen, but sort of estimating how much uptake they thought they would get in the credit program to maintain the revenue requirement being collected, so. But, yeah, no, it definitely can be expensive to install these things and whether the credit, we find that people who actually install them, it tends to be people who already have them installed. So if you've been given a rate, but you realize you've already, you have underground storage tanks or you have a pond on your property, all of a sudden, you decide, okay, I'll just go and get it cleaned out and then I'll go down to the city and show the certificate that it's been cleaned out, then you get your credit. So you're not actually doing a lot of work to get that credit. So it's actually providing credit for the existing stormwater management that's on the ICI properties. But you're right, to retrofit it is more expensive and it takes, it would, it'd be a calculation how long it takes for them to get the payback for that through the credit program.
Okay, well, it'd be great to notice and we're not the first mover on this if others have been successful in incentivizing those changes as opposed to just what's existing, right? Because I mean, I think that's what we want to do, is provide that carrot to, you know, put less pressure on us and deal with more stuff on site. Okay, thank you, your worship.
Yeah, one thing through you, Mayor. I would also say that we have heard municipalities say that when properties redevelop, they are calculating how much they're going to pay in a stormwater rate and they redevelop accordingly. So, you know, that does help as well.
Okay, good. So maybe not right away, but eventually. That brings us to councillor Chisholm and councillor Adams. And then we'll go to second timers, starting with councillor Heslett. Councillor Chisholm?
Thank you through you, your worship. Just a couple of comments with respect to, and first of all, this report is an excellent report. It's, we're moving in the right direction. But with this report, I think it's going to create a lot of administrative, and I see that we have over sixteen million dollars in administration for this to happen. So I'm just looking, being, using common sense, this is almost a mini-IMPAC. And what I mean by that, an assessment, they've done in Ontario through all our homes for market value assessment. It's almost like we're doing a kind of a mini-process to do that with all the properties in Oakville. So this is an immense operation. And when you said you need five FTEs for it and this is looking more like it's going to be a new part or a new division within the town on an ongoing basis. So I can appreciate the complexity of this process. But I want to circle back on this because we, I know it's, we're talking about a financial plan and what we're doing here. But I think there's a story that needs to be told and why we're doing this. It's very important, what's happened in Mrs. Soggin, Burlington flooding and everything else that's happening. We need to, we need to be, I guess, to push the level up of seriousness in the next thirty years if we don't do this. People need to understand because wastewater and stormwater is not a visual thing. It's all underground. They don't see it and they probably not even aware, you know, it's automatic. It's like my wife saying, I turn on the water in the house and she turns the tap on in the shower and says, how come there's no water? Well, I turned off the water. Oh, I know, we turned off the whole house. So that's, it's a mentality that people, just, it's an assumption that we have this service and it just continues on and it goes. Now we're saying, we're going to put a value on this. And I'll guarantee it and I can put my shoes on as a taxpayer and saying, oh, here we go, another tax. Here we go, it's a money grab. And that's where we really need to say, the money that we're raising, or not raising, that we need, we need to tell them what those projects are. We need to tell them the tangibles and saying, yes, we know it's so many millions and millions of dollars, but these are the projects we've got to do in order to do that and why we're doing it. I think the story needs to be told, you know, because I know we're jumping to the fees and everything else, but we need to tell that story and we need to, I know the education's part of it, but we need to tell the story and why we're doing it. So I just leave it as that. I think that's all I have to say, but congratulations on this work. And I know it's going to be an extreme complexity of process and tax time on everyone, but we need to do it. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Adams?
Thanks very much. And thank you very much to staff. This is something I've been working on for, it feels like about ten years since I brought it from Credit Valley Conservation, where I first saw it. There's this one piece that I was hoping to see a little bit more of, which was on the rebate and credit system concepts. Is it possible to have a cost of operating those programs per unit of water managed in some way to give us a sense of, is it worth the effort of going through those rebate programs? I understand there's an educational element and a feel-good element to those. And perhaps on the commercial property side, it makes more sense. But can, that was something I asked about when this came to us last time and I don't see a whole lot of it here. And I think it would help, when it goes to the public, for them to understand the cost of running those programs versus the opportunity that it might provide to them.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I know you did mention that last time. The reason why we decided not to provide additional kind of costs and what the program might yield, as well as the administration, is we really need to have a better understanding of what we might be offering in terms of the rebates and the credits. So we were hoping to get more public feedback first before deciding on what the credit and rebate programs might look like. before deciding on what the credit and rebate programs might look like. But I do hear your point made that before they can maybe comment on that, they need to also understand what it might mean. So I'm not sure, Pippi, if there's any way to kind of figure out a cost per or?
In lieu of that, would it be possible to, when we're doing the outreach and asking for people's opinion, one way of testing that is to ask if, if the taxpayer, if the residents would like to subsidize credits and rebates or if they would like credits and rebates to be self-funding in terms of their impact?
Through you, Mayor Burton. Yeah, that, it's complicated to do those kind of calculations. I haven't seen that done specifically as far as equating cubic meters of retention storage of water on a property to administrative costs. I have not seen that done and it's a bit of a head-scratcher to think how you'd actually would calculate that. Most of the credit programs that we have seen implemented, they do look at, for example, cubic meters of retention on a property proportional to the amount of credit you receive and that's how the credit is priced. Or it's sediment volume, like how much sediment you're keeping on the property. And again, that would be proportional to how the credit is priced. The administrative cost, that's a really good thing. But I think we would have to have the benchmarking information of credit programs that have been running for a long period of time to get that information of the administrative cost proportional to that. And one of our colleagues on this program, Nancy Hill, runs the national benchmarking program for stormwater. So I will put that in her ear as new data to collect and potentially we could incorporate that in the future.
Okay, I look forward to any additional information you can provide on that and thank you so much again for the work.
Thank you, councillor. And I wonder if staff and ACOM could give us greater precision and specificity about the places that are offering these programs of credit and incentive. Ms. Warburton, I believe, said that the take-up is extremely low. And it would be very good, I think, to see how low that is and if anywhere has big take-up. Because that too will help us evaluate whether it's worth, whether the game is worth the candle. Okay, thanks. Councillor Hassett-Dale?
Thank you, through you, Mayor Burton. So I was headed that way as well. But the other piece, I just want to make sure that I'm clear because councillor McNeese asked some really great questions. And so on slide 12, those are the charges that if they were put in place, would net us the additional, the, sorry, the total amount we need annually to support your projection of these costs. Did I under, do I get, is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. Those are what the cost would be to support $24 million annually. So it would be an annual bill that we would collect and based on whether it was tax or a flat fee or a variable fee, that would be the charge you would see to each of those individual type properties. And though those are average, so as, sorry, I mean Phoebe said, we do need to dive a little deeper and kind of do that calculation for, I guess, every single property to kind of see that differential under those different methods. So were you just referencing slide 12 as an example or?
Just as an example.
Yeah, because there's 12, 13, and 14 are all different property types, right?
Right, I get that. So, but when I look at it, is there a reason when you go out to the public you wouldn't put in what the current charge is? In other words, we've already stated in other slides that 4% of the tax base is covering stormwater now.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. We did consider that, but the purpose of showing these amounts was to compare the different types. I know there is a consideration that what they're paying now and it could increase.
Or decrease based on what?
Or decrease. I think through, we did look at that at a high level and I think from my recollection, it was the high-density residential, because their piece of the pie goes down so small to like that 6%, they're the only ones that would really decrease. The low-density residential would still increase, but a marginal amount. So it's something we could consider, we could take a look at it. We were, it just gets really confusing to try to show all those different numbers. I think once we zero in on maybe one methodology as our recommendation, we'd be happy to show them, this is what you're paying now and this is what you will pay under this new method and be able to provide those comparisons. Right now, our focus is on, if we just continue to add to the tax levy and increase to get to that $24 million, that's the charge you would pay under the tax methodology. Or we could shift to a different method of a flat fee or a variable fee. And those, and I think it's the differences between those methods that we're trying to emphasize at this stage and which would be preferred.
So I appreciate that and I absolutely appreciate the level of complexity. But people often just want to know. So today, I have to pay X, whatever that is. I'm required to pay more in order to support this important asset management investment we need to make. It gives them context. But you've thought about it, I just wanted to raise it because as I went back and as I've listened to the conversation, I'm not sure it's clear and I think you are going to get this question from people.
So just another comment through you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to say, the other reason why we're potentially not going to show, because we do have the option to phase it in. So we don't have to jump to that $24 million amount in one year. So if we do phase it in, it could be incremental and we could make that marginal increase over a few years. So again, until we figure that out a little bit more. And we are hoping to be able to do that, to kind of minimize the impact and minimize all of those concerns that people may have.
Okay, and my last comment is, when you're looking at that administrative cost, it would be, it would be interesting to see if there is another way to do that work. It seems really high. Given what we already do and what we have to do, it just, it seems like an incredibly amount, unless it is primarily more one-time setup and organization and then it levels off. It, my immediate reaction was, wow, that's a lot.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it does sound like a lot on the onset. But when you look at the order of magnitude and the volume of projects, to have a team of five deliver that size of a capital program is actually quite lean, to be honest. If we were to compare to, for example, to our total transportation engineering group, which is implementing our capital program of, you know, $80 million per year, it's bigger. So yeah, I understand your concerns and it's an estimate for right now. As we were asked to bring it to the table, but we, once we know a little bit more about the billing method itself as well, we can probably refine that number. We are, there is a one-time cost of setting up, doing all the calculations for every single property and setting up the billing methodology. The ongoing, depending again what method we choose, the ongoing need could be large or small, depending. If we're doing the variable, which requires maybe more calculation effort, it might be higher. If we do tax, there's probably no effort. And flat fees probably may be more of a half an FTE.
Well, again, thank you very much for your work and thank you for all the thinking that you're putting behind it.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Madam Director, help us understand the $16 million. I understood it was $16 million of the $700-odd million and I understood that this was over a period of time. How many years is this spread over?
30 years, so it's an annual $500,000 per year.
Doesn't sound quite as scary when you break it out that way.
And it would all be recovered with the fee.
Yeah.
Right, so we wouldn't be adding it over here to taxes or something like that. It's, the idea is to build it all in to the full fee cost. Yes, sorry, that's why it was included in the $730 million.
All righty, councillor Chisholm?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. That was a question I was going to ask, if it's advertised over time, so that's good to know. In this process, are we looking at as part of the administration of an appeals process?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is a very good question. I think we touched upon it a little bit last time. I think almost legislatively, you do need to have a methodology for people, just like your taxes, to come in and question and ask how their rate or their property fee was calculated. So that's also something to consider with that, with those FTEs that we've built in there.
Good, good to know, thank you.
So is that an inquiry channel or an appeal channel? Thinking about the strict meaning of the words.
I don't, is it an appeal or is it inquiry?
I mean, strictly speaking, is there an appeal for a utility fee?
Through you, Mayor Burton. I would say appeals in this case would probably be someone saying, I've been assessed wrongly. So you need to send someone out to the property to look at the property or look at a site plan on paper or, you know, just to deal with that and appeal the evaluation of their fee. So, yeah, but that's built into the administration of a cost like this. And I just wanted to clarify, those five FTE that you've got in your budget, that's to administer all of the projects and programs, not just the rates, right?
So there was five FTE to deliver the capital program and two FTE on an administrative side?
Yeah.
And that, some of that is to do ongoing analytics and planning?
Right, but just for the fee, like that, you probably need up to two FTE to get it started, but not as much once after you've got it up and running. It's much easier to administer.
Right, thank you. Thank you, everybody. I sense I could probably ask for someone to move receipt of everything we discussed tonight. Councillor Chisholm, thank you very much for your quick hand. Any objection? Madam Clerk, there's no objection and councillor Chisholm's motion carries. And that ends our work. It's been terrific working with you tonight. These have been terrific questions and I'm glad we're taking our time with this. As councillor Adams pointed out, this idea came to us 10 years ago and so nobody can accuse us of rushing to do it. It reminds me of a story that former mayor Harry Barrett told me once about a centennial project that opened in '77. And I gently asked, wasn't centennial '67? And Harry looked at me and he said, well, Rob, this is Oakville and we like to discuss a thing real good before we actually do it. So with that, I'll say goodnight and that's the end of the meeting.